Gracias.
We will now have our welcome and we will start with President of City Council, Michael Jones.
Presidente del Consejo Municipal.
Thank you Chair Rizzi. First of all, good evening to everybody. We appreciate everyone coming out to share.
Ayudar.
I will offer my apologies upfront to the interpreter. I will try to speak slowly.
Voy a tratar de hablar en lengua para las entidades.
Ensure that, to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to hear. We are here tonight to do just that as a council.
Estamos aquí como consejo.
To listen, to share.
Para solicitar, para compartir.
To interact one with another, to understand how we can best serve.
Como podemos mejor servir.
The students of RPS.
A los estudiantes de las escuelas públicas de Richmond.
RPS students, they're our children as well.
Los estudiantes son nuestros hijos también.
And we support them.
Y el apoyo.
I'm glad to, and I'm proud to say that.
Es nuestro y estoy orgulloso.
We have supported RPS in their budget asks for the past two, three years. That was something when Mr. Addison, Ms. Nye, and myself, when we first came on council, back in 2016, that was something we were committed to, to finding a pathway forward to fully fund schools. And I'm proud to say we've done that. Is there more work that we can do as a council to continue to assist? Of course, the risk.
Consejo municipal.
And we will continue to challenge ourselves to do that. We are glad that we have built schools and will be a part of building more schools, but more importantly, we want to help and facilitate the building of children. Because in the end, they are our legacy. And so to my colleagues that are here, we want to just thank, on behalf of my colleagues here, we just want to thank Chair Rizzi, Vice Chair Burke for agreeing to this sit-down. This is not the educational compact. We didn't want it to look anything like that.
No queremos que sea.
We wanted to come and hear how we can help roll up our sleeves to assist. We want to partner with the school board. And so we are committed to not throw jabs here or in the media. And honestly, I gave him a hug as he came in. We've always somehow been on good terms, but came off in the media a little bit. But we are bald-headed brothers that understand the importance of education. We all want the same thing. We all want the same thing.
Queremos la misma cosa.
The success of our students. And the challenge is finding the pathway to get there. But I'm committed to finding that path. I don't know the path.
Yo no sé.
I'm not the SME in this room as it relates to education. And so again, we take the posture of listening. We take the posture of learning. And we take the posture of wanting to come alongside to build a better Richmond. And we will not have a better Richmond unless we build better and stronger children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And now I will offer welcome. I have a prepared statement. Good evening. I would like to welcome you all and thank you for making time out of your busy schedules to attend this important discussion. We are at a time when our young people need us the most. The pandemic did much to upend life for many of them. Social media and technology have stepped in to take the place of much-needed exercise and social activity for many of our youth. And because of fallout from the pandemic, economic inflation, and other factors beyond their control, many families are facing difficult times. This is also a time when financial and social inequities have been revealed and exacerbated. Political unrest and the recent fights to maintain civil and human rights have not made this any easier. And we certainly can't minimize the effect gun violence has had on our communities, especially those of color. Our families need relief, and our children need love and support. They also need us to do all we can to provide them with a world-class education. This has never been more important. It is with all of this in mind that we enter this meeting. These are serious times and deserve serious action. It is our hope tonight that my school board colleagues and our friends from City Council can discuss and agree upon how we can best work together to serve the needs of our young people and to be sure that the solutions we've identified will be fully funded. We must prioritize our children and their education where funding is concerned. And upon that, I know we all agree. We look forward to working together to be sure that this is done. We ask that you also trust us to make the best decisions for the children of Richmond Public Schools. Trust that we will eventually request, what we eventually request, I'm sorry, will represent the best and most prudent path ahead for keeping the main thing the main thing. The academic achievement of our children, all of our children. Thank you. So now we will have a presentation from Superintendent Kamras.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to everyone. President Jones, Vice President Nye, and Vice Chair Burke as well, and to all the members of the council and the school board that are here this evening. Thank you so very much for making time for this discussion. Before I dive into the presentation, I just wanted to share a word of gratitude to all of the RPS teachers, principals, bus drivers, custodians, social workers, nurses, and countless others who truly go above and beyond for our children every single day. This morning, I had the pleasure of meeting with Principal Waller from Bouchal Middle School, our Principal of the Year. She's doing a truly phenomenal job, and I don't think she would mind me sharing, but as we talked about attendance and doing whatever it takes, she shared that most mornings she picks up some children from home to help mom and help kids get out the door. And that is just one example of what our principals do every day, our teachers, our IAs, and everybody else. And so I know you would all join me in just expressing our gratitude to the incredible professionals who serve our children every day in RPS. And at the school board, we do this. I don't know about council, but this is, this is, all right, fantastic. I am going to briefly go over my budget proposal to the school board. This is the exact presentation that I shared with the board. I will not read every page. I want to just hit the highlights. Before I do, I want to just express how profoundly grateful we are to the city of Richmond. Richmond has been good to RPS. The mayor and the council have prioritized our children, and anyone who says otherwise is just not looking at the facts. And so I, I know that it's easier for us to ask and harder for you to allocate, and I just want you to know how grateful we are. Our ask this year is significant. It is significant because our need is great, but also I would respectfully share that collectively, we need to advocate for more from the Commonwealth. And that, that is where the lion's share of investment for our children lies and increases are desperately needed. So I'm, again, grateful to the city and looking forward to our joint advocacy at the state level. With that, I'm going to dive in. I'm going to skip the first few pages, which are a bit of a budget primer. You all are deeply familiar with how the budgeting process works. I'm going to draw everyone's attention to page five. This is a high-level overview of the proposed new expenditures in FY '24. You'll see it's a total of thirty-five point, I'm sorry, it's slide eight. I need new context. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Nye. Thirty-five point three million in proposed new expenditures. About two-thirds of that is for teacher and staff pay increases, about twenty-four point two million. That is to meet our obligations per our collective bargaining agreements with four units that we currently have. Teachers, instructional assistants, our school and nutrition services staff, and our care and safety staff. In addition, we are proposing investments in student wellness, supporting our English learner students, who are our fastest-growing student demographic. We're also proposing just shy of seven million dollars to save some very critical positions that are currently funded by the American Rescue Plan. And then we have a smattering of other obligations, including utility increases. I'm also proposing another 1.3 million in cuts to the central office, and I'll say a little bit more about that in a minute. But again, the proposed increase in expenditure is just about 35 million. Turning to the next page, just very briefly outlines the teacher and staff compensation increases. You can see all the detail there. The biggest part of this bucket is a 6% raise for our teachers, which comes in at just shy of 18 million dollars. And then you'll see the other raises for the other units. I know our teachers rightly get a lot of attention and the pay increases rightly get a lot of intention, but I do want to lift up the agreements that we have with our instructional assistants, our school nutrition services staff in particular. We have not been paying them what they deserve. And I am thrilled that we are able to, hopefully, move them up to a more living wage. And that is really what is at the core of those increases. And then at the bottom there, you'll see 3.5 million for our annual step increases so that for each year of service, our teachers and others continue to increase and don't have their salaries compressed like they did during the recession. If you can turn the page, I wanted to just highlight a point of pride for the entire city, for the city council, for RPS, for the mayor. If the 6% raise were to go forward, that means over the last six budget cycles, teachers will have seen a 30% increase in pay. And to put that in more concrete terms, that means the average teacher pay the last five years will have gone from 52,000 to 68,000 dollars. Certainly, we all want to continue to do more, but that is significant and dramatic. And two-thirds of the cost of that increase has been borne by the city of Richmond. I know the Commonwealth often publicizes the raises that are offered, and certainly the Commonwealth puts forward money for them. But because of the way education is funded in Virginia, localities like Richmond end up paying a big portion of those increases. Moving on to student wellness on the next slide. We're proposing basically three investments. One, a crisis support team to help our students, our teachers, our families with acute crises that occur, whether it's gun violence, abuse, the loss of a family member or a staff member. Right now, the individuals in RPS who are responsible for helping create a really positive school culture are tasked with attending to crises. And we want them focused on positive school culture, not crises. And so this is a small team we're proposing to handle this. We're also proposing additional personnel to help with attendance and mental health. You'll see there listed social workers and other personnel for school, for George With, Carver, Marsh, King, River City, Thomas Jefferson, and the Richmond Alternative School. And then the last bucket there is a big new investment in athletics, over 700,000 dollars for equipment, uniforms, grounds personnel to keep our fields in top shape, higher coaching stipends so we can fill all of our positions and get the very best folks. Athletics is more than just a physical activity. It is an attendant strategy. It is an academic strategy. It is a mental health strategy. And so we wanted to make that significant investment. Turning to the next slide. Also proposing a little over a million to support our English learners. These are young people for whom English is their second, third, maybe even fourth language. And so we have proposed here additional teachers, ESL teachers, as well as coaches to work with our general education teachers, an additional counselor for our welcome center where we screen and place recent immigrants, and additional training for our general education teachers so they can get certified as ESL teachers. And so then we don't have to recruit as many new ones to come into the division. Next bucket on the next slide is the positions on the American Rescue Plan that we are proposing to bring into our operating budget so that we can save them. You'll see they are largely bread and butter positions. Bus drivers, counselors, custodians, nurses, psychologists, social workers, and then the Richmond Virtual Academy, which was launched during the pandemic. And the board voted last year to turn into a fully certified school of record. I will note, while our transportation isn't perfect, it is much better this year than it has ever been. This is the very first year that we don't run double backs and triple backs. I see President Jones nodding because that was a serious issue, particularly on the South Side. It's because of these 16 bus drivers and the highest bus driver pay in the region, which the board put into place, that we are able to not have those double backs and triple backs. So again, this is simply saving these positions that are currently on the American Rescue Plan. Next is a series of other priorities that you can read through at your leisure. A variety of projects that the board has prioritized, and then some basics like utility increases that we all face and need to make sure that we budget for. The next slide outlines the central office cuts that we are proposing, several positions and some non-personnel services as well. For example, all of the professional development funds for central office personnel and some temp contracts and things of that nature. I do want to note, we have worked very hard at RPS to put every last penny we possibly can in our schools. Towards that, and since I've become superintendent, we have cut 119 positions out of the central office. I want to say that again, 119 positions out of the central office so that we can hold schools harmless. And I know there was a fair amount of critique when I first joined the school system about where the dollars were going, but I wanted to make sure it was absolutely clear that we're trying very hard to hold our schools harmless as our needs increase. Next slide shows the revenue picture, and this is the one that is obviously perhaps most germane to this evening. We anticipate about 2 million in fund balance from the prior fiscal year. We anticipate about 6 million from the state. And that leaves a delta of about 28 million, which is our proposed ask of the city. Of course, ultimately, that is a decision for the school board. This is my proposal to them. But that is the ask based on the investments that we have put forward. Again, I want to remind everyone, 24 million dollars of the ask is for those teacher and other staff increases. And then finally, I just want to briefly touch on our CIP proposed budget. Nine and a half million dollars. You'll see a $3 million investment in athletics to complement our operating budget investment in athletics, and then some other bread and butter activities, electrical, HVAC, and so on. And you can see their proposed list of projects on the next two slides. With that, I will pause, and I'm happy to take any and all questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamras. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kamras. I just want to, one, just inform all of our colleagues here on the dais and everyone that is listening. We, this was the brainchild of our Chair of our Education, Health, and Human Services Committee, Counselor Stephanie Lynch. She is absent this evening due to a travel conflict. She was stuck on an airplane in Texas and is unable to be here. Two of our other colleagues, I see my third colleague came from the General Assembly, Dr. Newbill and Counselor Trammell were over in the Senate General Laws Committee. And they are running, they, the General Assembly was running a little behind as they typically do. So I just thought it was important that we share that. And we would ask our colleagues, with permission, that we would keep our questions to the items at hand here. Chair Rizzi and I, we had a good conversation about how we envision this time going. And so that if there, if there, if there needs to be a redirect from either side, we are up for that challenge, but hopefully we won't get challenged in that vein this evening. So with that.
Yes. Questions? Discussion?
Thank you. Sorry for my tardiness. You guys know, we wear many hats as council, on city councilmen. I had a question about on page 13, the virtual academy staff. I see that it's 30 full-time positions, 3 million. Can you all justify why we need a virtual academy? I'm just kind of unclear on some of the services that we're offering because I was told that we don't have any high school teachers for a virtual academy right now. And so I just, just want to know about this number and what are the steps to addressing that?
If I may, right now, the high school portion of the virtual academy is run through the state's virtual course program. We have some support staff to assist those students, but they are not receiving core instruction from RPS staff. And so we, in essence, pay tuition for those state virtual courses for our high school students. The K through eight is taught by RPS staff, and those are those positions.
Thank you, President Jones. Just to build on that question a little bit, how many students are in the virtual academy? Thank you.
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I know that the team will grab it for me and let me know shortly.
I just want to say I'll probably have some future questions as I go through. I've been going through the budget and just had some questions, and I'll be able to address it after this meeting, but I just wanted to answer that one question.
Anything else? Questions? Comments? Yes. Vice Chair, Vice President?
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent, for the presentation. I had sent you an email follow-up to our meeting the other day about the dreams for RPS. And just if we haven't seen an update in that in a couple of years, at least council hasn't. And it would be good to see what our return on investment is in that, where are we moving the needle? And I know there's been struggles in a pandemic in the middle of all of that and all kinds of things. But still, if we are still, if this is, if this is the plan, where are we with the plan? And have adjustments been made? And how does this budget tie back to that?
Thank you, Vice President Nye. So my short answer on dreams for RPS is I still believe it's the right plan, though it needs updating for the current moment. And that is something that we are hoping to do over the next six to nine months with the community, with the board, and so on. As for our goals, the painful truth is we took a massive hit during the pandemic on academics, on social and emotional indicators. And so all of those goals frankly need to be reconsidered in light of a new baseline for where we are now. The good news is we are moving in the right direction. We are showing growth, and that's what's most important. But we are much like just about every division in the Commonwealth, still not yet back to where we were pre-pandemic, and we can all agree where we were pre-pandemic was not acceptable. So we have a long way to go, and I would be more than happy at maybe an upcoming education committee meeting to kind of walk through all those numbers. We also have on our website, on the homepage, a link to our data dashboard, which lists all of the goals and where we are on all of them. What you'll see is a big dip, you know, 1920, and then beginning to climb back out. So that is the, the short version of the answer.
Colleagues. Mr. Addison?
Thank you, Dr. Jones, and thank you for the presentation, Mr. Kamras. And we shared this briefing last week as well. And I wanted to bring up one of the reasons why I think this meeting came to be, which was Dr. Pando's, which is why I mean, which was Dr. Pando's presentation. Am I better now? Which was Dr. Pando's presentation to us about J. Sergeant Reynolds and the dual enrollment program and offering the resources that are already available through what they have. And through some conversations I've had with their staff around dual enrollment, got some numbers back that I think just showed an opportunity for looking at how we can deploy that more. And what I think is the purpose of the question, which is just providing resources we have around the community to strengthen the potential for showing all the students you've worked, you work really tirelessly for, that, you know, there's more beyond age 18 of what we can provide for them. And to me, when we look at the comments that Dr. Jones mentioned in the beginning of a strong future for our city, it is going to be the children that are in your, in your hands right now, what they do next. And I want to see how we can together work on making that 18-year-old graduate be able to join the workforce in whatever the capacity they so feel choose to do. Four-year college/university, two-year associates, going to a trade or other labor school and getting involved that capacity, starting their own business. I don't care what it is. I want to make sure that the work you've done in shaping them and molding them and preparing them is able to, they can see that next step and benefit. And so for that question that came before us on council was meant to be kind of a conversation because that's not just what you do. It's what we do. It's the libraries that they go to after school. It's the community centers that they go and do programs with and learn and other skills and get exposed to something that they might not have at home. It's these community aspects and partnerships. It's where we bring libraries and Parks and Rec and your athletic programs and schooling opportunities together because it's the community aspect that really strengthens what we do. And so for me, one of the challenges that I want to see, and this is personal as a First District representative, is that Albert Hill Middle School has a need of providing better programs. Humphrey Calder's across the street and mostly vacant. You've got a tennis courts, great, but that's not enough. And in the school itself, I want to see us bring more to the table. And that's not a criticism of anything of your budget. That's what we, because that's money that we need to put in to support those programs, and that's across the entire city. I'm just saying because I lived across the street from it. And so for me, that's kind of where I saw this conversation, is what do we need to do? What can we do together? And that's what I want to see. I see, I see Chair Rizzi has a response, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Addison. I do have a response. I've been talking for a long time about how our Parks and Recreation, especially the community centers, have been pretty much left to just have been pretty much left to just kind of deteriorate without any support for years. And I've been asking questions about why the programming disappeared. I've lived across the street from one for 21 years, and I have watched the programming slowly just disappear. And it's like a, it's a ghost town over there now. I mean, and there's a gym in there, but the kids are never in there. And so, you know, I, I believe that the point of this, and I thought that the point of this meeting was to look at how we could combine what you provide with what we provide and, and give our children wraparound services so that they have something to do all the time until they go to bed. Because too many of them are out in the streets at night with nothing to do, and our community centers are empty. And, and what is that about? So I am really concerned about how I see that, you know, a lot of the services, you know, some, certainly we need some new services, but some of the services we provided children long ago are gone. And I'd like to have more conversation about how to rebuild those.
Thank you. Well, I wholeheartedly agree and appreciate that comment and sentiment. And, you know, in, the rowdy is, you're right, we need kids having productive, constructive things to do. Parks and Rec does a great job with that. And so I am hoping to see in our budget from the mayor, you know, continuing to invest in our Parks and Rec so that they can do that programming. And I am hopeful that we will see those gems and facilities that we already have, you know, bringing with life and activity and maybe some jobs and pathways to careers. So I definitely think that's an underutilized resource that I, I think we could all agree, and I think we hear from our constituents, we want to see more of. So I'm hopeful to see some of that in our budget. I'm also hoping we can see more out-of-school activity in our schools. You know, figure out a way for, you know, can Parks and Rec also use the schools? Or neighborhood groups, or, you know, whatever. But there, I feel like there's so, there's so much compassion in the city of Richmond. There's so many organizations that want to help our kids and our families. If we can just make it better, because I hear this from people, sometimes it's hard to get access to our facilities. So I think that's something in governmental operations I would be willing to take on. What is our permitting process? What is, you know, the, like, are we prohibiting people from using the assets we already have? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a systems person. So for me, I think what would be helpful is if we could identify which systems are not working. And then maybe start the discussion. So maybe step it back a little bit and identify what systems are not working, because what we just discussed was, we have Parks and Rec over here, we have out-of-school time, we have this, we have that. Which system versus, and I share this a lot on RPS, putting resources to things that just become another thing. And so I think what will really help us is, if this is going to be a citywide approach, what is the citywide strategic vision for our young people that incorporates the wraparound services that we are speaking to? Because right now, it's, okay, let's give the money to Parks and Rec. So we give the money to Parks and Rec, and then we know what's going to happen. Parks and Rec does not have a lot of capacity, so then they're going to struggle to get the people to help them meet the need. We have to identify everything underneath the surface. And I think we can do it, it is doable, but coming to the table with a strategy. And so I'm appreciative of this meeting tonight, and I think if we can identify again what systems are not working, where is money already going and allocated to that is not, you know, it might be antiquated, outdated, whatever, and then begin to formulate new systems. Because the only way to move forward is to do something different because we all are in agreement that where we are right now are not working. So I would be happy to serve in whatever capacity that really focuses on a more high-level strategy that incorporates the community and all of those pieces that we would need to make this thing work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, good evening to all of the City Councilmen and also President Jones. My questions, I have some concerns since this is Health and Services and Education Services. And Richmond Public Schools do have an issue, as we know, with absentee. And we have an issue with our wellness going on right now as far as gun violence, mental challenges in our school. And what I want to know, we have a high absentee rate, and I want to see some coordination with Social Services and getting our students in the classroom. We're kind of overlapping our services. We have students in Richmond Public Schools that do receive counseling, in-house counseling, behavior specialists, home therapies, and there's no connection within RPS and Social Services. We know we won't have enough funds to actually provide the number of counselors or day therapies. So I would like to see the city come on board and help us coordinate with Social Service. I know that there is some policies in the city for families who live in public housing that their children should be in school. I'd like to see those executed. I would also like to ask the question, how can we leverage, how can the city leverage their resources in support of the challenges that we have in RPS? And again, I'm gonna say balance, gun violence, mental health challenges. We just had a new chief wellness officer hired, and she would need access to your police leadership, Social Services leadership, mental health leadership. And I think that she should be able to make decisions with decision-makers. So I would like to see that coordination. These are two things that we have in Richmond Public Schools that are really chronicled to our everyday lives in schools. Thank you.
And, and, and hold on, Chair Rizzi, just, just, if we can bring it back just for one second, we're getting into an area that we're trying to, that we'll go to next that Vice President Nye will talk about, and she has some really good information as well of what we want to do. But it, and, and so before we go down that shared services, things of that nature, can we bring it back for a moment to a discussion of, of the actual budget? If, if we can do that? And so, so, so Ms. Paige, if it's going down that line, if we could say, if, if your question goes down that line, we, we have that on our agenda to get to next, if we can just clear the conversation, any other questions as it relates to the budget presentation? If we can do that?
Mr. Jones, may I, may I comment respectfully? Would like some more guidance on how that conversation will take place, especially because we are currently in a discussion about our own budget in terms of how we are making decisions. We're still in the midst of that. And so what you have before you is a proposal.
Right.
And so I, you know, I just kind of would like to hear more about, you know, I don't know if the purpose of this meeting is for you all to question us about our existing services that we have already, you know, I mean, the questions about Richmond Virtual Academy, that is something that we're working on, and we definitely are capable of providing the services we need to our virtual students. So I, you know, is this about y'all questioning us about our decisions, or I'm not sure what this is?
No, it's, it's just simply asking questions and just having an opportunity to have a discussion because generally, and I've done this six years, we rarely have an opportunity to discuss and hear from the school board about the budget and/or the ask. And so I think that was the original impetus of this as well as looking at all these things. We're not here to tell school board what to do. We're not here to try and, we're, we're not. We're trying to understand the ask, right? Because, and, and, and just, Ms. Paige, hold on for, for half a second. I see your hand. Because we, we all know the way the, the, the budget process works. The mayor is going to put forth a budget, and he has the first crack at what is actually going to be baked into the budget and the priorities that he has. And then it comes before council, and then we have to deliberate on it. And so oftentimes, we deliberate, you know, and have these conversations absent of, you know, Mr. Cameras coming before us, maybe each of us talking to our own individual counterpart, hence Ms. Jones, but we've never had the opportunity to do this and to talk about because we, we all hear some of the same questions. We, 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 we do. And, and so the, the, the one thing that, 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 when I, when I'm out knocking doors and people are asking questions about, you know, the money that we put towards schooling, how does it impact test scores? And we know that's always been a question. How does this impact learning? Because that's a valid question. When we're talking about $28, $30 million above our original ask, that's just, not, not that we don't want to give it because I'll tell you this right now, if we had it to give, all y'all are going to do is ask. And then, but the first part, right, if we had it. And so it, it's, it's, I think it's important for us to have this dialogue, so you know, we're not just sitting back summarily saying what we will and will not do from some ivory tower. But again, the opportunity of understanding the impact of the ask, how we begin to deliberate on our end. And again, I've done this six, going on seven years. We've never had a conversation as a group to hear from you because in the end, the budget comes for us at the end, right? Mayor's going to present his budget, he's going to have his number in there, and then ultimately, it's going to be up to council. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to share ideas about how we make this happen to understand, for us to understand, as we get the questions of, well, why, why are they asking for more money? We don't see the test scores. And I try to answer it as best as I can, right? And Nicole, when she comes to, you know, our, our town hall, she does. But again, this is a wonderful opportunity. We're going to get there as we talk about shared services. And I think we've got some great news as it relates to that because we're interested in that. But just, just for the record, because I asked Mr. Cameras earlier when we met, help me understand and help others understand the impact of increase in the school budget and how that translates to test scores, truancy, and things of that matter. Because if it's not a one-for-one translation, we need to help share that with the rest of Richmond as well. So I mean, if, if, if we don't have any other questions, if that could just be the last one and we'll segue into that.
Ms. Paige? Ms. Paige, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to thank everyone for being here. I think this is a great opportunity for us to collaborate, but I have a process question. So we're talking about the budget. I feel like we may have been better served if we had had this discussion like in the October, November timeframe, because as some of my colleagues stated, we end the, the budget process just like council with the mayor. So we have already identified our priorities, but again, this may be our process that will better serve the two entities in the October, November timeframe. So that's one point. But going back to something that my colleague, Ms. Jones, says about, said about systems, I think that is our next step, to see what systems are working and not working. Because just one example, after-school programming with Parks and Rec, we know some places doing a great job. We know other places may need some enhancements. Another example, the Powell's, right, the Powell's program. I remember one time it was really in a, in a demand. I don't know what has happened. The mayor's youth academy and the mayor's fellowship, the internships, those are opportunities for our young people, for employment opportunities to gain jobs, you know, on a job training. So I think the systems is the next step that, in the direction that we should go in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paige, Dr. Harris-Poemahmet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate this collaboration, and I'm excited that we're at the table. I certainly agree that because of how a school division plans to begin their budget deliberations for forward-thinking possibly in October, and I would even say September, because it is my understanding that Mr. Cameras meet with building principals in September and October to determine what their needs are for the next school year and currently in that school year. So there are, there is a multi-tier level to school-based budgets. They're always preparing for the next in the moment. That's how we operate as an instructional program. One of the things that I wanted to share, and this is for us to think about, before the school board and administration asked by submission of a budget, additional funding or any funding. And I really want us to think about this and unpack this. We must, as a division, demonstrate with evidence, the data, data, the previous, excuse me, the previous data that was collected, how that impacted funding that was previously supplied to the school division. Can we show with our current state of affairs, with academics, our standards of organizational management, our procedures and practices such as safety and security, as such that we need additional funding? So what do I mean by that? Have we provided the necessary documentation and evidence prior to this conversation? Because if we haven't done that, then we're just meeting to meet. There is a responsibility that we have as a division that we must provide answers to the questions prior to us even sending a ask for additional funding. That is ethnically and morally responsible of us. We should not have a collaborative meeting, as much as I love being with you all, without having the systems already reported to you so you, so you will know what we stand in need of based on the evidence and data that's, that has already been presented to you. So maybe how the human, and I may mess this name up and I apologize publicly, the Human Services Committee is orchestrated. We, that's a place and a space where some of this information can be provided. Period. Point-blank informational sessions only. Coming here this evening, and I'm excited that we're at the table, I'm not sure if RPS has all that we need to present to ask for any money. We just started Budget Talks, unpacking it last night. So the meeting earlier is necessary, but we have to do our due diligence as a school division because not only does the community need to know where we are academically and with all procedures and practices and processes, the three Ps in place, we also need to know what the glows and grows are transparently and where we need to go as a division. And the monies that you have supplied to us, we need to be able to say, this amount went here and it improved this. This amount went here and we have challenges here. This amount here, and we need to continue to grow. This amount that you, that you gave to us went to here, and we now have this growing. Have we had that conversation? And until we have that conversation, colleagues, we're just meeting to be meeting. And until we have that conversation, colleagues, we're just meeting to be meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. You know, I want to add, I think certainly those are conversations that need to be taking place year round. We need to be meeting and not just, you know, our school board, tell us what you're doing. But let's talk about how we can work together to achieve our goals. I am often feeling like we pit, you know, one group against the other, one person against the other. And that ends up being a toxic situation for our governing bodies and a bad example for our children. And so this is a good conversation to have about how we can work together in the future. To have these conversations along the way so that when budget decision time comes, we just say, hey, this is what we need. And you say, okay.
But I think, and I don't think we're missing the point, but that's the reason for this meeting. For us to begin the conversation of what's needed. I mean, I'm just saying, because again, when Stephanie Lynch came up with the idea and wanting to do this. It is EHS taking a more proactive role. So we are sitting down and having the, because again. I'm glad that we're saying that, hey, we're willing to meet in October, September. And ensure that we're doing the right things. And as a council, we're open to that. We're not, we're not closed to it. We want to know what's the best thing that we can do to help you in discharging of your duties. And then for y'all to help us understand what we need to do to discharge ours. Because we need to have some conversation with Parks and Recs as we move forward. But I think the, for me tonight is, is at least laying the framework for saying we're on the same side. What do we need to do now? And in the future? Because, you know, our new chief of staff, Ms. Letitia Holmes is here this evening. And so it is a meeting of some sort in September, October. As we do it, we're behind the process as a council. And how we do our budget formation. And we're trying to play catch up and lay up a praxis by which we do it proactively as well. So we're not saying we got it right. We're just saying, can we get this right together? And I hope that's the one thing that we can take away from this evening, that we're in this thing together. We don't have it all together. And so we're willing, we're willing to work towards that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. And thank you, everybody, council, school board colleagues. I do think everyone has a vested interest in being at the table. And just to kind of piggyback off what my school board colleagues said. I'm grateful that we are here and we are just seeking clarity and understanding because it was an invitation. And we weren't really sure, you know, what that invitation, you know, pertained. But I do think, you know, some of the things that were mentioned in terms of like meeting earlier. But I also, as you all are speaking, I just think about it from like a philanthropic, you know, kind of partnership. In terms of like you all are, you know, really connected to us. It's not like a, you know, you're a funder, we don't know you. It's a relationship and we're building and continuing to grow it. But there are parameters around funding that, you know, is given. And so I think it's not taking it in a manner of like you trying to control what you give us. But it's just about holding each other accountable. And as you all are adding new things to the city. And ways that we are trying to really move our city forward, which includes every family, every resident. Which our RPS students are that first. We all want to just be able to do that. So maybe some level of, you know, communication of like, I think Madam Chair mentioned that. We, or maybe Dr. Harris Mohammed, it's like we give updates, you know? And we do need to get in the habit of that and not because you all are, you know, controlling the funding. But again, it helps you be thinking as well as things come up. If extra money comes through or like if there's a surplus or if there are things that are happening. It's like, oh, we can then share these with the community that we know are in the need of that, which is RPS. So I just kind of think or see it as like this philanthropic kind of like community of like all of us trying to meet needs. And then thinking about where the money is and so that we don't, I guess, become thinking that there's a cash cow. Just sitting around waiting to give us money. But let's work together, I think you all mentioned, like on the state level and be together proactive on recognizing what on a local level we can do. But then what can we do together to continue to just raise and increase the funding for RPS?
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do you want to? Ms. Burke has been waiting a long time. Ms. Burke and then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, council persons, members and school board colleagues. I'm delighted that we're here at the table this evening together. It is overdue. And you have to get started somewhere. Technically, I'm thinking this should have been done last year, last May, April, May. You don't wait until September, October. Because as you plan for the upcoming year, that's done earlier. But I know that each of us on the board has had the opportunity to work with our council persons. For instance, Dr. Newbill and I meet weekly. And not anything here should be of surprise. However, I am concerned, I have two concerns. Number one. First, just laying the foundation. Every child should come to school in a safe, clean, nurturing, loving environment. That also the opportunity to be academically prepped. Okay? Every child should live in a setting that is safe. Safe. That he or she doesn't have to worry about where they're going to lay their head the next day. But that is what's happening. So one of the asks on this budget is the, I'm gonna bring it back to the budget, Dr. Jones. Is the mental health crisis team. The superintendent shared with us last night, and we're still studying the budget as well. So you're really kind of catching us. Not in a good place because we're still learning and doing research. As you know, we've had 13 shootings this year, rich and public schools. 175 threat assessments, rich and public schools this school year. 125 reports to Child Protective Services of abuse and neglect. Suicide risk assessments, 118 of our students. 373 gaggle reports, 2,533, 373 for suicide. And 1,189 for violence. Now that's happening in the neighborhoods before they get on the buses to come to school. So as we look at the whole child, it's more than just what's going on in the schools. We know that. But I'd like to take us back to what Ms. Jones stated in regards to the systems. And Ms. White stated in regards to social services. I hope we do get to the point where as we're not working in silos, because that's how we're working. And that's why at the end of the day, Johnny can't read and Suzie can't write. Because reading and writing are not at the top of their priority. It's where they're going to lay their head that night and when their next meal is coming. So I hope that we, as a collective effort of people who've been elected to serve. That we're mindful of shared services, as Andreas just stated, shared services. I was just talking to my neighbor. Let's go back to Parks and Rec. One of my schools, and it's not just my school, the fields are terrible. They can't run track, but they continue to win trophies. It's deplorable, it's unacceptable. But adults would tell you it's okay, but it's not good enough. Why does it have to go miles away to run track and can't run track right here in the city of Richmond? That's, that's, we can do better than this. So why can't Parks and Rec, not saying it's a gold mine out there. But at one time, we used to do this, Parks and Rec Recreation did work in the schools every day. So I don't know whether it was COVID or what took place, but the buck has stopped and it's dropped on all of us. So I hope I'm not here this evening in terms of you did this, you didn't do this, your test scores aren't this, so you can't do that. That's not the purpose in being here. But I think this conversation needs to take place in May or June when school closes in preparation for the coming year. Because once the year started, we should be rolling. So at the end of the day, I look forward to the whole child from the one extreme to the other. Mental health piece, which we know what's happening, look at what's happening, safety. The athletics, the attendance. We're going backwards. It's time to be woke. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Ms. Page.
I'm good. I don't want to beat the dead horse because I think we have all, we are saying the same thing. So I'm looking forward to next steps.
All right, Mr. Yeh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council is right to ask what kind of bang they're getting for the buck. Candidly, altogether, we're going to spend more than $550 million this year alone. Or the equivalent of $25,000 per capita student, more than anybody around. My colleague from the fourth inquired relevant to dreams for RPS. And the superintendent rightly pointed to that we're not performing relevant to the metrics that we self-imposed. And I concur with the superintendent's assessment at the risk of stating the obvious relevant to COVID. And of course, when you close a schoolhouse doors for two years, you can only expect the kind of results that materialized. But I share that to say that. Absent my colleagues adopting some real surgery relevant to all things RPS. And at the risk of putting my foot in my mouth, if I was on the second floor in council, I surely would not approve. What is being asked of us because candidly. We haven't demonstrated that we merit it. And that's a hard, that's a hard pill to swallow, but it's the truth. So my question of council, and if I. Ask a question that perhaps is awkward and rather that I not ask, apologize, but it seems to me it's the elephant in the room. But my colleagues and I are being invited to evaluate a budget that. To the superintendent's preview presentation a moment ago constitutes a $28 million year-over-year ask of the taxpayers in the city of Richmond. So the obvious question is. What does council anticipate relevant to year-over-year increase in expenditure, if any, for RPS? Because that, to my colleague's point a moment ago, surely would be most instructive as we deliberate between now and the end of February. Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Yeh. A response from council before we move on? Mr. Addison.
Yes, I'll make sure I stand closer, sit closer to this. You know. You have a tough job. And the job you have, we all inherited. And when you look at what we're being tasked to do, and I did some research on past budgets and did some comparative looking at. Overall increase of our city revenues versus increases of RPS funding or vice versa. And truth be told, that's not the best way to look at it. Because while it is important to look at how we achieve that, I think the point of a conversation around what we're funding. Is also the things that we do in our dais every week. It's the rezonings. It's the investment in, you know, creating new housing. It's the investment we're doing in regards to transportation. It's the safe streets they can walk on to and from school. But what I wanted to kind of elevate a little bit is. We have an economy that we need to grow together. And one of the things that I said back in 2016 as a, trying to be a this, I guess, when I was running for office was. The best economic development investment we can make as a city is to improve public schools. And we're doing that. It's not perfect. No, it's none of, no part of it's perfect. None of us have the answers of exactly what's going to work best tomorrow. And yes, we can track things and look at metrics and things in that capacity. But to, you know, Mrs. Burke's point. We need to strengthen communities, neighborhoods, bring people together. We need to be focusing on, truthfully, the revenues you need us to pay for your ask comes from development. It comes from growth, reinvestment. It comes from the things that create new jobs for your graduates to go do. It becomes the place where we're going to move these things together. And so a lot of times, and I'm just going to say this bluntly, the projects that we bring forth are opposed because it's going to impact schools. And I think that's the good thing. Is because that impact on schools is good. It's the things that bring more resources and people around the things we want to fix and improve. So while it might be a problem, because yes, the past, we've had challenges with funding our budgets. During our, my six years I've worked on with my peers, we've stepped up. And we've met your ask and need to the best that we can with a budget that has not grown to the capacity that your asks have been. And now it comes to the thing of what's next. And I think that question of what's next is what I'm hearing, is what is next? And I think this meeting is good. Timing and that might not be perfect, but that's what we're going to do next. What I hear now is, let's create those jobs for your graduates. Let's go attract that new development. Let's make sure that they have the skills and are ready to go do the work that we're creating. You know, I can look at affordable housing, but it takes years to build affordable housing. But I can create a job tomorrow. And you can prepare, you can prepare them for that job. And together. That's where I can then have the revenues to go, here's another couple more million next year. We built it. We, we built that. And that's the conversation that needs to have, happen is we need to be seen as not you coming, asking for money. It's you're coming to go, we need more money because we are doing these things and we're getting more students. And we're growing in our communities and we're seeing the need for more investment. And I think that's where I'm seeing we are all wanting to do. But we weren't created to do that. Like we weren't as two different bodies created to do that. And I think that's how we are tasked right now to fix, to do that together. Because the money you're asking for is revenues, that we need to go figure out what we're going to either cut or decide or move around. I would much rather it be how we're doing this together, so we're growing the pie as a whole. And that we know how we're going to be funding your need next year because we're already on the same page. So for me, the ask is going to be of council, of economic development, of prioritization of investment, of where we're going to put. Things to happen so that this can grow. And then we'll be working together with you on what are your needs for Parks and Recreation? What are your needs for investment in your park, in your fields and other resources? Let's do that. Because it's not going to be a surprise, as Dr. Burke also, I don't mean Mr. Mrs. Burke said again, but she said at that point of. It's not a surprise for her counterpart on council because she knows it's coming down the pipe. And it's hard, we are part-time elected officials trying to balance a billion dollar budget. And with that comes these tasks of conversation and conflict, but let's not have conflict. We haven't had a conflict. In my six years, we have not had a conflict. Let's keep it that way. And let's work together for what we're doing next. So that's what I wanted to put forth as a response to those previous points.
Thank you, Mr. Addison. Mr. Jones, you want?
Yes, well, in the absence of Counselor Stephanie Lynch. Vice President Nye is going to pinch hit. And talk about city-funded services for children and families that support RPS engagement. Engagement with school-aged children, and she has some other information to share as well. Vice President Nye.
Thank you, President Jones. Yes, I will try to channel Councilmember Lynch for a moment. This meeting, I think everybody knows it was kind of her brainchild in working with some school board members. And this is not a meeting where we have big decisions to make. This is information sharing, this is resetting the table. We've had some tense moments over the last year-ish. On top of, you know, prior, well, still in that moment pandemic. Everything you all have gone through, everything our city has gone through and the trauma that is still going on in our community. So we just really wanted to get around the table and have a conversation where we didn't have a major decision to make. We know you just got the budget, we know this is the superintendent's budget, you guys are still feeling your way through it. And we are cool with that, we're just here to absorb and have a dialogue. So I hope I, I hope Councilmember Lynch would be okay with with that. But this is a list of some areas where the city has services. And this is from the mayor's office where they thought they would overlap or be applicable to our K through 12 population. So what I'm hearing from some of our school. So what I'm hearing from some of our school board members, well, from all of the school board members is that we do need to work together, which of course we know, um, and we know that our city is siloed. So we, we do have something we'd like to put out there for you tonight. I think parks and rec as well as what we can do in the mental health, social services area is some low hanging fruit. But there might be some other places where we can collaborate, where the city has services that you and your principals might not know about, or it might be too confusing to access. So we have some, City Council has some money set aside to do some financial analysis with some outside consultants. So we would like to bring them on board to do some of this work, like over the next four to six weeks and dig into some of this and kind of ma, get them to make some recommendations about how we can be more efficient, how we can fix this. Um, and we thought that bringing in this outside group and they've done some work for us in the past would help accelerate it. And of course, we want us all to be at the table. We want this to be a collaboration. And we can't fix it all. But I think, again, if we look at some of these really hot issues, I think the community centers is a great one because we talk about that amongst ourselves. It is very frustrating that we have some community centers that have amazing programming and others that have zero programming or subpar programming. And then the whole facility is a whole nother issue that I won't get into. But, but I think there are some challenges there and it would be good to know where you all see the students' needs. You know, we're looking at it from the neighborhoods and, and that perspective. But, but where are the holes from the, the school programming lens? So I, I'd just like to hear from some of the school board members about that thought. If, if folks think it would be helpful, we'd really like to work together on this issue.
Okay, Dr. Sean, Dr. Harris Mohammed, I'm sorry.
I'm a little confused. So I'm going to quickly summarize and then, you know, I don't mind at all you stopping me or, you know, helping me. So council's looking at working with an outside entity to help unpack, domestify, on my words, break open, pack open, um, the needs of the school division? Okay, so.
If there are areas where we have services and you have needs and we're not connecting, like digging into that.
So, right, so, okay, so.
And opening those doors.
So an outside entity, a third party, if you will, that will pretty much do a, I don't want to use the word audit, but sometimes we, a study, a review of processes of where our services, where we have similar services and where those services overlap, right?
Correct, yes.
So the concern that I have with that is the school division needs to be able to understand the services that we have in-house. Before we go ask a third party to come and unpack what we have. And what I mean by that is there are services within a K through 12 instructional program that is very different from a higher ed that may, can coincide with city services. So we need to first, as a school division, be able to put on the tape everything that we have, every service that we have. If it's, and then what do we define a service? Do we define our health, our nurses a service? Do we define our, um, um, school counselors a service? Do we define our testing coordinators a service? The city doesn't have assessment on that level. So what service, and I've been in this business of public education for 31 years. So I can speak to and walk in what I believe services overlap. And there's not many in public education that will overlap with city other than after-school programming for our children. So I would put the onus on what does the school division have? And just like a T chart, these are the services, but we first have to define what we consider services. I mean, I mean, do we consider what I just, the examples I just provided, services? What are you, what is the city, what are city council members, excuse me, considering services that you all may have that, um, the school division may or may not have? What comes to my mind may be social workers, right? I know that, that happens on both sides. That is a position that occurs on both sides of the governance team. So that, that is one that we probably could unpack and digest to see if they overlap. However, city social work services and public education social work services are different services. And so we just can't, and, and I want to be clear when I say this. When school board members say that we don't think, or they don't think that we can collaborate on that facet or that point does not mean we don't want to work together at all. I want to make that statement publicly. Everything that you all have, we may not can benefit from. Let's just be honest. Now, we can always benefit from money. Let me be clear. However, we have to, we don't want to say we're doing it just to say we're doing it. We really want to be intentional about these services of the third, you know, the third-party services and looking at what overlap and what we can pull together. I'm a little weary with that because then I don't want the expectation to be, well, you all have this and we have that. So let's come together and make this happen. I'm not really sure of that right now. Thank you.
Can, can I just respond briefly, just to clarify? So this is not, uh, we, we can't eat the elephant. We, we can look at a couple targeted areas that I think would be helpful in some of the feedback that I had heard this evening. You know, the, the after-school programming, community centers, the mental health issues with our children and the support surrounding that. I think there are a couple big areas that we can look at. This would not be, uh, we need to look at, at every staff in every school and every program in every school. This is, and this is not a, we, City Council is not putting this out there as some sort of, you know, mandate or, yes, we are just trying to say like, where can we work together? And do we have programs in the field that would be helpful to our children that you all might not even know about? And you all might have programs out there that we don't know about and that we're not referring people to as well. So I think it would just be a good exercise to go through. Because even within City Hall, you know, the, the schools and the city are siloed. The departments within City Hall are also siloed and we're working on that on the daily. But I think there, there are some ways we could work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Young and then Ms. White, and then we have to be mindful of time. We, we are, we've, we've noticed this meeting to 7:30, so we want to finish as soon as we're able tonight. We will definitely have to continue this conversation. Um, and so I don't know that any decisions will be made tonight, but we can go ahead and wrap up and talk about next steps. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you for that. I'll be real concise. I'm only one of nine, but yes, I fully support that. Makes all the sense in the world. We do have duplicative services and it makes a lot of sense to do precisely uh, what my friend and colleague in the fourth just spoke to. In fact, to be real blunt, perhaps I shouldn't, but be this candid, but it was the principal subject relevant to my very first conversation with Mayor Stoney in 2016 prior to either of us even taking office. And, uh, and so, uh, at least one person on the school board will wel, welcome that and, and really appreciate council introducing that conversation. Thank you.
Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I spoke earlier and I think it is a good idea. And I think that the ones that I had brought up, what we have the most major challenges are gun violence and trauma, homeless. That's a big thing and we need to look in that in our schools as well as chronic apathy. And I'm looking at your list here, also youth jobs. You do have this here. And these are great needs for our students in Richmond Public Schools. And I just asked, uh, earlier, how could we have leverage to some of your resources? And those were the police, the social service and mental health leadership. Because we just, um, hired a new chief wellness officer. And if we really want to know what this list can do for RPS, maybe, Council Lynch may want to get with the wellness officer and see what type of collaboration we have. Still are just asking us individuals as a board. I think we need to go to our leadership with her leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Um, I have two statements and then if there are no pressing issues, we can adjourn. Okay, Ms., okay, Ms. Jones, you'll go next. Okay, so three more. I, I, I do want to.
I'll be brief.
Okay, all right. So, you know, one thing I want to say is that, you know, I really want to emphasize that we need help from City Council, um, for, you know, a lot of these quality of life issues that our students are facing, right? Because honestly, when you're hungry, you're scared, you don't know where you're gonna lay your head the next day. It's really hard to focus on academics. And so we are definitely going to ask you to continue to focus on addressing these. Some of these are immediate, Mr. Addison. Some of these need to be taken care of now. Our families need to be stabilized. And so we, we just ask for that. And then, um, Vice President Nye, if you could provide us some kind of write-up of what you're proposing so that we know the details. This is kind of just, you know, you're hitting us with this tonight. Um, we, we'd like to see more. All right, Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really quickly, I just wanted to add to the conversation around the duplicate, duplicative services. We are talking about close to 19, 21,000 students and a city population of 200,000. And so as a parent sitting here, um, I want to know, are we even talking to parents? Because we, what we, the thing is, is to make sure that parents may already be utilizing these services. And we're making the assumptions that they're not by saying, hey, let us see what RPS is doing because we have these services. So I think something that can be super helpful is really getting a understanding because some parents have their kids in after-school because they work. Some parents have their children in parks and rec because they do sports. So it's not about duplicating services. Sometimes it's about choices and parents have their kids here versus here. So I do think that that could be super helpful to really identify and ensure that we are expanding services because they, they, they're all needed. You know, whether it's parks and rec, after-school programs, whatever, you know, services, jobs, all of that. But I just want us to be mindful that, you know, some of that is not so much about it's not happening. It's parents having their kids over here. I want my child to work. My kid got to go home. So I think that's something we should really think about too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right. Uh, Councilperson Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just real quickly, um, I really appreciate all of you coming tonight and speaking. And Mariah, I really appreciate what you said because a lot of the issues of children in Carver come from my district in Gilpin. And we have a huge gun violence issue. Um, and, um, Ms. Burke, you mentioned the whole child and that is imperative. And one of the things that I'm glad to see in your budget is more, um, money for social workers and more money for counselors. One of the things I feel like we can, um, duplicate services is our lobbyists over across the street. I think we can kind of partner with that, especially talking about the LCI formula that hasn't been changed in over years. And so I just feel like that is important because you're dealing with truancy and that formula is based on attendance. And so you all have lost quite a bit of money because of that formula. So somehow we need to partner our efforts to make sure that all Richmond students have an opportunity for equitable education here. So I just wanted to mention that as another collaborative partnership. We as council will love to make sure we can partner and, and, and work to support y'all's efforts since, you know, we're dealing with budget here. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was an excellent point. Thank you.
In, in the effort to give closing remarks on behalf of council, I just want to do one thing. Just thank, thank everyone for coming out. Those of you that are in, uh, the audience, our support staff behind us. And then, and then, you know, indeed, you know, all of our colleagues on, on, on school board. We don't do this enough. We, we, we don't. As far as just sitting down, talking with, and again, without trying to make a decision, just to hear. Because some of the things you said, it's like, wow, okay. And, and it's like, okay, some things are clicking. And I think that happens as we collaborate. We want children to be successful. We want you to be successful. And tonight is just the beginning of saying, we're here, we want to do things differently. Tonight wasn't perfect outside of the one thing that is perfect. The fact that we can sit down and talk and find a pathway forward. And so I just want to thank Chair Rizzi, uh, and Vice Chair Burke for coming out and, and not knowing, you know, not knowing all of what was going to happen. And that, that, that's, that, that's vulnerable. That, that, that's, and so I appreciate your vulnerability and being willing to come out and share and to talk. And as far as next steps, we will reconvene with, with council and especially with, uh, uh, Counselor Lynch to, to begin to talk about a pathway forward. So it's collaborative in that sense, right? So we can sit down and build agendas together and talking points together. Because in the end, man, I pull for y'all. Nicole knows I'm out here fussing and fighting. Camus knows as well. I'm, I'm, I'm helping to take kids to River City Middle School. That buses are coming back. I'm pulling for these kids because I see what they're going through because we're all going through it together. So please don't think that we're being adversarial. We love our children and we appreciate the hard work that y'all do because it is hard. Uh, and I've, I've been on record as saying that before. It is a very challenging task because a speed table is one thing, but a child learning to read is another. And so on behalf of council, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, and, and again, Ms. Nye, will you, I'm sorry, Vice President Nye, let me get this correct. You will provide us with some more details about your proposal?
Yes. Okay. Technically, it's not my proposal. It's, it's, yes, yes. Okay. But yes, we will, we'll put some thoughts on paper, especially after the feedback we've gotten tonight. And it is Thursday, so let's say early next week, we'll, we'll get something to you. Okay?
Thank you very much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.